...to the citizens of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our next upcoming Select Board meeting is Thursday, March 3rd, following the special town meeting, which will be called to order at 5:30. Here. Here at the fire hall. Do we have approval of the minutes and the warrants, what we do want to do with the consent agenda?
I have moved approval of the...
Second? All in favor? Select Board comments announcements, Madeline?
I have no comments.
I have no comments.
Business item one, approval of the special town meeting warrant. Let's will.
So, I would like us to, if you're comfortable, after the discussion we've had, consider keeping that language in the warrant and moving forward with what we have today. Kathy, how do you feel?
I'm looking forward, I'm still...
Yeah, I'm trying to get that page.
Oh, it's been over.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Page nine.
Page nine.
I did a terrible job explaining it earlier, I'm sorry, I was a little tongue-tied, I can do better if you'd like. I think after looking at Derek's lot presentation and showing what his expectations are of his building lot, moving forward with the language of this allows him to have what he believes is his right as it stands today.
It has. It makes no difference.
Question. Your proposal will fall without a legal opinion?
No, with this language.
Without a legal opinion, that language?
Sally looked at this.
She did not look at it in light of what the documents are that were in sale. It's a perfectly legal thing, but the question is whether or not which document would take precedence. There was, there was, is a disagreement. We need to see what the legal standing is vis-à-vis the plan or this language. There's no point in...
This isn't overriding his plan.
Question.
This is just, this is leveled the playing field for the entire urban development zone.
Right, it's nothing to do with the plan, really.
Yeah, you're dealing with two different things, I think.
And I'm also dealing with the reality that this was not discussed. And it deserves thorough consideration and discussion.
I just think, this has nothing to do with the legal determining of his plans. This has to do with the land use and building area of the urban development zone. Just because he's in that, this is not solely for his benefit. It's for the entire urban development zone.
And it deserves full consideration.
And I'm moving that we take a look at it tonight and put it up for consideration.
Derek, can you just say to... Would this impact you negatively or if this is not putting it tonight?
I guess it's a question for the planning board, I guess it's a question for Darling, I mean...
I'm afraid, I'm afraid that if that paragraph B doesn't go forward, then legal counsel looks at it and says that you have to stick to your forty to sixty percent for whatever reason, that then you're going to be stuck with the forty to sixty percent. That's my fear.
But this is not just for him, this is for the sixty to seventy-five percent.
But that wasn't the question, the question was if they don't do this tonight is out of detriment to him. So if you, if paragraph B doesn't go forward and legally it's determined that the ordinance as it sits stands for his development, then he's stuck with forty to sixty percent. And I don't know as if that works for what you were planning this spring.
Sally would do that, right, that way?
Yeah, so you're talking about two different things, you're talking about a legal determination based on his subdivision and what he's allowed to do and if it circumvents the ordinance, that's a legal determination by legal counsel. This ordinance change has been looked at by Sally and approved by legal counsel. So this moving forward doesn't need a legal determination whatsoever.
Well, it already had one, right?
It's already had it, Sally's looked at it and it's been blessed and looked at legally, so...
I think it should be looked at as, this is a, this is a land use proposal for the urban development. He supplementally may benefit from this, not having to come to the planning board for an evaluation of his building lot every time, from that perspective. This is not just for his benefit, but it does supplementally, supplementally address the question of how his plans are and what the determination is. I'm not saying that we do or don't move forward with a legal decision on those plans, but this allows the building lots to be standardized in the entire urban development to provide appropriate building space. To the entire development.
And I don't see that there is any drastic harm caused by following the usual process and having this discussed in me, I just don't.
And I propose that we consider it tonight. Kathy, what are your thoughts?
I just hate to penalize people because internally we follow the process. If that makes sense.
So are you seconding it?
So I just want to make a point of order, I think everyone on the boards are at one point. Motions are, when you make a motion, it's for action. You move to approve something, you move to authorize someone to do something. You don't make a motion to review something. You're reviewing it when you're talking about it, so a motion should be to move forward as presented, as amended, that sort of thing, just for clarification, because you've made a motion to review it and that's what you're doing right now.
I move that we accept the language as presented on the current warrant to positively provide building lots larger in the entire urban development zone.
That's not what that says.
I think what you need to do is make a motion to accept the entire warrant as presented, second it and discuss it.
Okay.
You need an accurate motion on the table.
I move to accept the entire warrant as it's presented today.
Okay, I'm going to second it?
Just for discussion purposes and nothing else.
All in favor?
Oh, no, there was no discussion.
Right.
Right.
It's just...
I have nothing else to say.
Here's my thought process.
So Christine, do you want to have them sign your copy and move it down?
I don't think we're there yet.
Well, I'm not sure they know what they voted on.
I think we just want...
I think I was trying to simplify something in a backfire.
So I think it's just discussion.
Yeah, go ahead, continue discussion. Of whether...
My thought process is we're going to put this before the citizens' abortion and ultimately they're going to make the decision. So that's my thought process.
I, as a citizen, would like to see the ability, if I choose to buy an urban development piece that's not within what Derek wants, have the ability to build as big of a profit income business as possible.
I think it levels the playing field for it all.
Does it cost me a crap load of money to buy it, to develop it and take the risk of making money? I need to make it the best possible decision that I can do and not be restricted.
And I believe this language actually levels a playing field for the entire urban development zone.
Is this a good level or is it a bad level?
Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm building a building to make profit out of, I need to make it as big as I possibly can and as much profit.
I understand.
It's just the bottom line.
But this allows more than what was previously...
In the ordinances.
In the ordinance, right.
Not necessarily what was on his plan.
Yeah, so what, what this, what we're discussing or listening to discussion about is actually going to give anybody who buys or owns those lots more latitude to do what they want to do.
Correct, correct.
Which is what you're saying, you want them to have a chance to do what they can do best to get a profit out of it.
Correct.
I want to understand what the problem is.
I think the problem is procedure.
Yeah, well, yes.
The procedures weren't followed, I think that's the only problem.
But I don't think, I don't think there should be a penalty for someone who's been trying for months, coming to every meeting.
So why I'm sitting on the fence is we didn't follow the proper procedure.
Right, right.
And we need to stop and start following those. My other thing is...
You don't want to hold it...
Right, and it's really a town decision, it's not my decision.
Or just agreeing to put on a warrant for people to decide whether they want to move forward or not, essentially.
You can't go by the fact that its grandfather, because it was legally, all the criteria were already accepted.
We may be able to, we'll need a legal...
We can't make that, it's...
But that's different than this ordinance change.
Right.
And this, it's hard because they're simultaneously happening, but this language truly is for the entire urban development zone. Ironically, it addresses what he's trying to achieve at the same time.
What is, two issues. One, I believe the board needs to find out, just to clarify the legality of which takes precedent. And the second is, if it's a standalone ordinance change for the whole zone, is that a good thing for the town? If it is...
Yeah, if I put that on there, don't they get to decide?
That's what I'm saying.
Exactly, it's up to the voters at this point, once we put it on the warrant.
It's up to the town, decide the town meeting.
Correct.
Whether it's good for the whole zone. Irregardless of what we found out.
It's a standalone, yeah.
No, we know that now, but for the town, there's two decisions. The board can decide and to decide to have legally looked at and see what happens and what takes place as far as which plan or ordinance takes precedent. And then tonight decide if you want to change the whole zone, irregardless of what they're doing, for the benefit of others. And let the town meeting decide.
Okay, Kathy, I think, I think I have, I think I have a solution for us. So we have business item number two as goal setting. So what if we have as part of our goal for this year to set, at least in writing, if not in stone, procedures by which all ordinance changes must come before the select board in order to be considered for anything?
But how does that affect today?
That would mean, for me, that would mean that I would feel comfortable approving the warrant as presented with the changes presented, because then we will be setting, hopefully, procedures by which all changes in the ordinances must be made, which includes adequate discussion and time for discussion for each change. And I think I can move it, because it makes sense, I mean, this links that the planning board needs procedures in a timely fashion that we need to give to them, vice versa, I mean, I think we have some internal issues that shouldn't be town issues. While the proc... Everybody should know what the procedures are in order to bring an issue to the board in order to have citizen concerns...
This isn't a time...
...to get amped on in a way that provides good thinking time for the board as well as good expression time for concerned citizens, so that there's actually a means stated so that everybody knows how to bring something to the board.
And this would extend to any ordinance, correct?
Land use, noises...
Anything.
Dogs...
Marine resources.
Dancing.
Yeah.
Whatever.
General AM.
I think this is a good compromise, I think this is where we've been trying to get to. I just think we haven't made a priority and we need to make it a priority.
Number two.
Yep. So, does someone...
So as it stands, it's been approved, do you want to make another motion to recall the decision or...
I'm okay with the decision of how you approve it being as is.
But do you need a new proposal or do you need the other one taken?
Well, I think we need a vote because Suzanne and Kathy raised their hands, but Madeline did not, so I think we need an official vote.
Well, that's why I'm asking them, because that's an official vote that's officially approved, but I'm asking them if they wanted to re-vote on that.
Can you, did you write down what the, how it was said?
Suzanne said to accept the town meeting warrant as presented, seconded by Kathy Vallee. Flintman immediately proved two in favor and one opposed.
I would prefer that if somebody says at the end, at the meeting, was this approved by all three of the municipal officers, we could then say yes.
Okay, so do you, do you want to make a motion?
I, I move that the warrant for the special town meeting be approved as presented. Second you. All in favor?
All right.
Sorry, we got to go. That's good, I could have dropped all those pages out for the public hearing next Tuesday. And it's not up to what happens tonight, it's up to the voters, is this just a step in that direction?
Did you have any mention of the newspaper about this meeting?
Yes, it was published, it was advertised twice.
I didn't see it, I just sat by them.
That's part of the process, it has to go in the lead base.
Why did I thought?
Yep, it's advertised in the newspaper, it's on the sign up front, and it's on the website and in the email that is notified.
I just, I didn't see it and I, Madeline was trying to keep an eye out for it.
The thing is legal size, so that would be...
Yes.
Everyone's side in their operating spaces, good job. Okay.
Article number two, votes on it. Okay, well, I believe on the, on the top of the list for the year 2022 that we make setting procedures for the ways in which business should come before the town as a priority. So we do this each year. And setting goals is great, but I also think we need to set timeframes.
Absolutely, I think it gets away from us. Absolutely, I 100% agree with that.
Okay, by September. Procedure is going to be number one, do we really want to wait till September?
September.
No, I don't want to wait, I don't want to wait that long, but it might take that long, I want to have time enough so that it can be thoroughly discussed and thoroughly presented and people have an opportunity to weigh in. Can we make this part of our select meeting every meeting so that it doesn't get away from us?
Absolutely.
Do we need a special meeting?
Set up a special meeting and make this the first thing on our agenda every... It should be, I agree. See where we are with our goals.
At every meeting?
Absolutely. Because there's so many things that kept getting added to it, I don't think that all of these goals were actually achieved in the timelines that we, I think, had built it with.
Of course there didn't be, because sometimes things take longer than we expect, but I think that we should, we should do that on a rotating basis, otherwise we'll never get anything else done. So how do we, because I'm really feeling like, I've been doing this, what, five years now? We cycle. I don't really know what the end results are, I don't know what the timeframes are, I don't know what we have accomplished, what we haven't accomplished, what still needs to be accomplished, and sometimes I feel like we haven't accomplished anything, so...
I feel the same. I have no problem, because we can just get an update, we can have an update. An update on every, you know, where are we on the goals? What do we know about here? Can we cross this one off? What's the next step in this one? And it's...
And I just want to make sure that one of the things, that the first thing on our list is getting the procedures done, so that everybody knows what, how to bring business to the attention of the town, how to get on the agenda for a select board meeting, how to propose an ordinance if I have an idea, so that we have time enough to discuss things, see opinions, et cetera, et cetera, before we go off topic, which we've done a couple of times this year.
But I think if we publish the updates as part of our minutes, we may actually have more people come to the meetings because they'll see what's going to be talked about, some of the things, I think if we, I love the idea, Kathy, I'm having an ongoing, I'll say tally if we stand.
You can spend fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Where do you set time limits on how long we're going to talk about something? Well, I could go for five minutes, but it's...
But is there some way that you could say that things would be presented to the board within a certain amount of time before their meeting and then list when, you know, when your meeting is? And you'd always know, you could look at the calendar and see the schedule for the year of when you had to have something in front of the board in order for it to be discussed.
But there's things that may come up that won't fall within that timeline, and we need, we need... By meeting every, every other week essentially gives us a chance to stay current about emergent issues on top of what we've got as our goals.
But don't they have to let you know ahead of time or do they just, or is it okay to just walk in and bring something up?
No, but that's one of those procedural things.
Well, and there's public comment, but then there's procedure, so that's being explained how, what is a public comment session for? What is the procedure? But this is, we're talking about really about having a timeline set for us to always be discussing our goals, because I think that we put them on our list.
What I was talking about was...
Don't finish the process when they're on the list, so we're trying to keep them current.
What I was talking about was not about that, what I was suggesting is that we need to have a published, as first goal is to have a published way of, so that everybody knows what the procedures are to bring attention to the board's selectment and to propose something for town meeting, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, because I don't think that's generally known. And it causes confusion, it causes unnecessary discussion.
But I think this would even pertain to, you know, how to, for people to understand, when, if they want to be on the planning board, how they get on the agenda, when is the agenda, these procedures will go across our interface as well as the planning board.
But that would be their job or not?
But they cross over though.
That's Jonathan's job or Carly's job.
But they come through the front office, so they're trying to get to us.
Right.
And I think we need to focus on the select board.
Right. Right.
But this is something...
Let's take care of the select board first.
Yeah.
Planning board process is on the website, it's on the applications, it's in the ordinance, John knows, Carly knows.
And we have, we have from the Thursday, May 6th, we have the 2021, we have the goals before us that we have discussed. And if we did, if we did, if we did an update on all of those, we have the Casella operations, I'm looking at, what was it in fact? Business item two, what the goal setting is.
So on Casella, I heard that they were operating outside of their regular hours again, is that true, Kathy?
Unfortunately. So that's ongoing.
So they went back to 3:30 in the morning?
So that needs to be on the list. The noise ordinance, we are working on that.
Where are we with that, Christine?
I have somewhat of a draft put together with the sixteen or so types of noise that we might hear. It's very messy at this point.
Yeah.
I think the board needs to decide what your goal is with the noise ordinance, what are you trying to accomplish? Are you addressing certain specific noises? Are you addressing overall noise? What are you trying to get at? Because there's, not a lot of towns have done this, there's really no boilerplate for it. It's something to be created.
Okay, so what we need to do is to set an agenda for talking about what's on, for a meeting, talk about what specific noises we've heard complaints about or personally have complaints for.
Or what do we... What, during, what'd you call it, quiet hours? Is that what you refer to as...
Yeah, yeah, business quiet hours.
You know, so that would be, that would be a specific, a discussion at a specific time on a specific board agenda. Because we're talking, for some people, we're talking just business noise ordinance. Right. Versus town. Others of us, others of us are annoyed by somebody's roosters.
Now, the Casella issue, do you want that to be on your goal as far as noise is concerned?
I'd like them to come in and let this to rest.
Or do you want it to be a separate goal, because what else are we addressing with Casella other than...
Well, their contract is up for renewal.
Right.
So we need to talk about that, but they have, they came and told us to our faces, we resolved the problem.
Right.
Our employee is doing it and now it's happening.
It's not, they haven't reached that level, it's very...
But they're not, they didn't keep to their commitment.
I know. But did they not keep to their commitment or do they need to talk to their employees? I mean, I think there's a huge difference there, I don't want to...
But if we're looking at a contract renewal, how do we stipulate behavioral change? If they can't even keep it heading into the contract renewal, they can't even keep the commitment to us.
I agree, because they also resolved to communicate better, and I've sent multiple emails with community concerns and complaints to radio silence.
I wouldn't mind putting them on the agenda in the near future to talk about it.
But just remember too, there is no other.
True. Actually, the state is considering someone different than Casella in their next contract. And I suggested to Christine that we should look at that.
Is there a date when they're coming?
Well, they've come, they came, they made a commitment.
Is there a date scheduled for them to come here?
I don't think a calendar's, no, not, not this time.
Well, perhaps we could add as a goal to ask them to come again, specifically our, our new resident manager, perhaps?
Can I make a comment on the Casellas?
Sure.
Approximately a week and a half ago at 3:08 in the morning, big boom, and at 3:47 in the morning, it was a Tuesday morning, it was directly from Casella's. On Wednesday, the next morning at 3:45, Waste Management was at American Steel and Luminum and dropped the dumpster there. It's loud, you know, it's, waste, waste is, it happens a lot, like sixteen, eighteen hours a day. They have big routes, I understand that, but there's, they're up there thrashing away, that was two times in one morning.
And that's for the quiet hours, I think, you know, or something like that helped and...
It gets worse in the summer.
Of course it is, because you have your windows open.
Close your windows, be hot. Sabina Landing improvements, we have consulted on that, we've accomplished stuff, not done.
I actually have, a resident asked for clarification on something that was said there. Madeline, you made a comment about the tides were receding, can you share that report where you got that from? I didn't know how to address that question for them.
The tides were what?
You said that the tides were receding, they were lower.
They were lower than they used to be.
So do you, can you share, they asked me, I said I can't, I don't know it enough, I asked, I said I'd ask you where that report was from.
Well, I've been watching it for 70 years. And I probably watched it when I was four, but, and before, but I didn't really remember.
You didn't write that down?
I didn't, I wasn't keeping my journal then.
Because I didn't, I didn't know how to quantify a report. Because I don't, I didn't know how to quantify a report.
Well, it's lifelong observance by somebody who's lived on the cove for more than a quarter of a century. Would that do?
And there may be some data out there that.
I'm sure, I didn't, I didn't address it. I wasn't, I, I'm not.
Because with all of these studies that are being done right now on ceiling overrides, I wouldn't be surprised if there's some information out there.
Well, the moon has an influence on it. There are low lows and high highs from it, but I, I, that's not, I'm not the one to answer the question.
Well, I, I was alive when the full moon was, was high in nineteen fifty-five. And I remember swimming and not swimming. So personal observation was what I based that comment on. I think that's sufficient data for that comment. Comprehensive plan update, we are working on that. That looks like it's a very active and vital committee.
It's a very good committee. I'm very impressed with the knowledge on that committee and the good questions that are being asked.
So we could, that's a continuation because we're not done with that, so we have to continue that. The road capital plan, where do we stand on that one?
We have a road committee, they're meeting.
So.
Moving on that as well.
So have committed, movement on that.
They just had their first meeting like two weeks ago.
And another one on Monday.
You sure you're doing it on Monday? It's a holiday.
Well, Jeremy wants it on Monday.
He's the chairman. Derelict boats, the ones that we had talked about are gone. Are there more?
Not that I'm aware of.
But there is still a camper from three years ago.
Yes.
What do we need to do? I think, don't we have the, I think you have the owner, right, of who the camper is?
I don't have the owner, no.
I thought Julie.
Well, Julie told me she knows the owner, but I don't know where she got the information from.
I would say that that is a bin in property by now.
It is. We can demolish it. We need money in the budget in order to demolish it.
Can we see if the current owner wouldn't take the responsibility?
A bin in property, you have to go through the sheriff's department.
No, actually for motor vehicles, you have to go through the state.
Well, it has to go through a governing body. You should be able to find the owner by the VIN numbers on it.
I think Julie shared who the owner was.
And Colin couldn't, couldn't get it?
Well, it doesn't exactly work like that. Same with the boats.
I'm sure they just forgot where they left it.
They're probably dropping it at their house.
Well, it's been moved, Ted.
They might take it.
So at least it's up at the dump. Or what used to be the dump. So there's movement on the boats. The trailer is, shall we say, in process? Land use ordinance amendments, must we?
No.
Ongoing.
So can we get a date on, can we get information on the camper trailer status? Anything to get to some information on that?
Well, I've been told by several people not to go in there, so I, and there's no late. So I don't know how to get information about who the owner is. Julie did say that she knows who the owner is, but she has not shared that information. So I'm not sure whether that's the case or not.
Yeah, I don't even know.
This is the one that hit the.
The dump, yeah, yeah.
I would suggest you have the road commissioner go up and inspect it. It's right next to the salt shed. It should fall under his purview.
Was that the guy that was plowing from like, he was up, from up north? Stay in the camper?
I mean, there should be a VIN number.
I think Julie, Julie knows who it is.
We could all.
And have Julie's boss ask her who it is.
Ask the, ask the sheriff, ask the sheriff if you said somebody had to look at it and see if they could hear it, who owns it.
We can do that.
Didn't you ask the sheriff to go up there and they were like?
Yeah, I did. I called the sheriff and they're like, why are you calling us?
Well, I would, I would call him if he would respond sadly, talk to the sheriff himself.
Yeah, talk to Julie.
Okay.
Just tell Casellas to put a chain on it with a loader and throw it in the pile.
Well, yes, that's exactly what I wanted to do.
At three o'clock in the morning. Three oh eight.
Three o'clock.
They'll call you period at three forty-five before they do it.
Hey, I'll celebrate that move, so.
Okay, one ways and harbor ordinance amendments.
I've made amendments to that ordinance that I feel are appropriate. I would need to present it to somebody at some point. Should it be the select board or some other body?
Probably us, there's nobody else, is there?
Right. So whatever you think would be appropriate, we can review it at any time.
Next meeting.
And I'm sure that I don't have the exact changes that we might be looking for, but it's a starting point.
I don't, I would rather not the next meeting because we're going to be having a special town meeting. Can we do it the second meeting in March? I agree.
So that would be the seventeenth?
Is that same kind of date?
Yep.
How fast to wear green rink beer?
Be a quick meeting and we'll go to drinking.
No, Jameson's please. We have marine resources ordinance amendments. That.
I worked on that as well.
Okay.
I just want to mention that these ordinance, we called them amendments. They're actually going to be revisions.
Right.
Because we basically need to throw out what we have.
Yeah.
And start over. I've also worked on the marine resources ordinance.
So do you bet a mark seventeenth as well?
Well, we could. I feel that we need to get the committee involved.
Yes.
Kind of hard to harness them as a group.
They're shellfish harnessers. Harnessing is not easy.
Right.
I will, they have free men, bringing them in if you want.
That would be really helpful because we've been told several times that they would come to the base and that hasn't happened yet.
I'm just saying, if you want input on your ordinances, you probably should attend. They'll give you the input for you.
And as part of that ongoing discussion about enforcement. And the marine resources ordinance, some of that has to be approved by DMR.
Right.
Fees and penalty schedule, we've done that.
Check.
Human resources policy manual. I know you've worked on that. We need to bring that forward.
That's fine. I got a call from Emily recently. She needs to update the part of her policy that deals with pay leave, which is in law. So I think as soon as we get that language figured out, because it would be helpful if we're assisted, then we can bring it to the board.
And do you have the appendix? Have they got descriptions in that as well?
We could, sure. But I would think to go along with it, we should look at all of the judge descriptions again and make sure that they really, they're what you're looking for.
Is there really input from the people that are in it? It's not a critical.
And that they reflect what actually happens.
Right. Really important.
Can we get that done by September?
Yeah, that's reasonable.
I think that's way too long.
Not really, not for personnel. We want to make sure we get it right and that's something Sally's going to need to.
But don't we have the policy manual? Do you have the most of them from last time?
It's, it's a revision from the last.
This falls into kind of what I think Kathy was saying is we've had this on our agenda of goals for like eighteen months.
Yeah, we can take it up at any time, but you know, the goals, the.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's that much, I mean, it was my understanding it was almost done. I guess I haven't seen a pen today.
It is done, it's written.
So now I think we should wait until September is over. We should at least bring it in and take a look at it.
Does Sally have the opportunity to look at it?
No.
Can we, can we schedule that with her?
Yes. But just, I can certainly send it to her and ask her to review it. But just keep in mind that she's going to be reviewing the town meeting warrants thing and the Casella contract and.
And, and our town isn't the only person she's reviewing.
Right, so.
So September is not unreasonable.
Yeah, and it's a long document. It's not a simple.
So I take sending it to Sally now makes an absolute definite review until September.
Right. That would be funny.
Let's expedite ours.
I just don't want your expectation. I don't want you to be disappointed when something can happen.
No, no, I just want. If she has it, if she has this day amendment, she can look at it and she doesn't, at least she has it.
She knows they are.
Right.
Yep.
She can put it in the pile.
Move it a little farther up.
Mooring management.
TRIL is coming out with a mooring program that should be released sometime in the second quarter of the year. When that becomes available, I think that's a good way for us to get started tracking our moorings.
Sounds like a wonderful way.
I considered in the past online mooring, which is used by Harpslow and some other local communities. But this is a less expensive, I think workable solution for less back.
Does it accommodate the GPS location of the mooring applicants so that they can't be moved unwillingly?
I'm not sure if that's what we can find out.
That I think is a piece that should be in there.
Because they actually put us on the list to be a pilot town for that program. So we'll be helping them work out the kinks.
That should be part of the kinks.
Yeah.
And wind farm sewer.
Oh, my favorite. I, I actually have done a little digging on wind farm sewer. And Bath is receiving twenty-two hundred dollars per foot up. Quarterly water and quarterly sewer is a revenue stream, yet they don't want to take ownership of what's in that. And as Derek has some substantial plans on the horizon, that could impact utilization of the sewer and create our obligation to fix and repair when it's really on their property. So I have a huge concern that we're not addressing this.
It's not necessarily on their property. It's on, you own the road, the West Bath on the road. They have sewer under your road.
Under our road. So I just, I, I, I am concerned as we start to do some of these development plans that they are receiving the revenues and we have all the obligation.
Right. Because we have ownership of the road. That's how it works.
But I think we need to, because it was, we need to find out permanent resolution and figure out what we need. Ideally, they take it or split it or whatever, but I think we need to try and find a resolution because it's their sewer. It's not our sewer.
Well, the infrastructure, well, I think it depends how you're looking at it. It's our infrastructure because it's under our roof.
We don't get any money out of it.
Well, no, that's true because we're not doing the hookups. But I understand what you're saying.
They have all, and it's just, I'm concerned as we, and I'm all for the development, but I think we're not, we're putting our town at risk by not addressing this.
What would the board like to do?
Consult Sally. I would like to think. Ironska. That we have some relationships with officials in.
Other towns.
Yeah. And that we could come to some resolution with this.
Because we're supporting some of their infrastructure, like the library.
I know we're not, but I'm just thinking, is this an opportunity? And I don't know. That you could engage and develop some relationships and some partnerships maybe.
Well, starting with Mark. And I've talked with Mark.
Now, do we, and I don't know David one, has he been helpful?
He's very helpful and he's also very busy. So I think that's why things get pushed off.
When this whole process came to play and, and all of those folks in that planning system, do you know if any of that was addressed at that time? Do you remember any of that?
It was all spelled out on the plans.
On ownership and responsibility?
I believe it was.
I've not ever seen anything.
Not on the design plans, it wouldn't be, it would be in the, it's part of the water district.
It's part of the sewer district, going up there and the watering up there is all planned out gas.
But, but responsibility? You know if that would have been in the, do you remember? I, I know it was a long time ago in Ironska.
It was part of the sale.
But it, there's a piece that just has not been.
There wasn't.
Assigned, like officially assigned to an entity.
I thought the sale required that we keep the road.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the answer.
And the responsibility for the sewer because it, the difference between the public ownership of the sewer and the difference in the private ownership of the sewer, as I recall.
Is substantial in cost.
Would have made the sale of the property by the town to you or anybody pretty much impossible.
It was part of the coal grant process.
It was part of that process.
I can, I can tell you what I know about this portion. The previous town administrator called me and said that, because the town of West Bath has a couple of fire, there's fire hydrants on Business Parkway.
Right.
And the town of West Bath leases, the pace of lease, I think it's thirteen, fifteen hundred dollars a year for this lease to keep those fire hydrants active. And in passing, we're two weeks away from purchase of the property. In passing, Adam said, oh yeah, by the way, next year it'll be the Dutch that's going to pay for this lease because they're going to own the road. And they said, whoa, wait a minute, that can't be. We can't have an infrastructure under a private road. If that, if that, if we have an infrastructure, if you privatize that road, we're going to give the Dutch a bill for eight hundred thousand dollars for the infrastructure that's under it. And this is the water department, nothing to do with the sewer.
Right.
Sewer never brought, was brought up. So of course, obviously that wasn't something with.
It's actually the sewer line that I'm concerned with.
I understand that, but I'm telling, I'm telling you, I want to make sure that you're, you want to know what I know.
Yep.
And this is what I know. It was a water. And, and when you get to Bath Water District, Bath Water District convinced that they have water lines outside of Bath. They, you know, they have them here, they're down the road, they're, you know, they do that in other towns, Woolwich and so forth. Bath Sewer says that they don't own a sewer line outside of Bath. But they have said that they don't own anything to do with, as soon as that crosses that part, the, the West Bath property line, they don't own. That's what I've been told, so. Whatever's working, a lawyer, no, I don't have it in writing, I don't know who I talk to, but that's what I know.
I look at, and it's sort of like, it'd be what you do there. You can put whatever business you get through the planning board process.
The downside is if it broke in half tomorrow, I'm going to call someone and say the sewer is on the street. You guys got a problem and obviously.
Or as we start to utilize it more frequently. And, and you have a, a dining facility that has grease, even though there's a grease trap, there's still going to be grease. So there's going to be buildup or something that's not in there today that could create issues that I would like Bath to take it or split it or so. Find a resolution that's definite, because we don't really have one right now. And I'd like, and I'd like, as Kathy says, that, you know, a supporting relationship with the community. As we support them, we would like some reciprocation back.
I think you might find that hard because in reality, from all the information, we talked to the boxes and boxes of all the information that I've gone through, I've never seen anything that this was ever talked about, ownership.
That's the problem. That's actually what my problem is, it was never talked about.
So it might have been something that was missed, overlooked or whatever, but to go for them, I mean, try it honestly, give it a shot. I don't know why they would say, oh yeah, why don't we just split that with you? I mean, they're mine, why would they, you know? Seems like a hard sell, but.
So there had to be somebody from the Bath Sewer Department that approved it.
It's right here.
Approved the connection.
Sure. I'll probably give you his name, but he's retired.
Two thousand nine was a long time ago.
Yeah, so if they approved this, at least the connection, that has to be a start point.
Peter Omen was the director at the time, sanitary and sewer.
Yeah, so he approved this septic plan that's tying in with the town of Bath.
They, there is wordage somewhere in a planning board minutes of the town of West Bath had to approach Bath and ask them if they had the ability to handle the sewer that this apartment developed. And after looking at it, the pump station, the, the lower. And after looking at it, the pump station, the lower end of Center Street, Wing Farm Road, they decided that yes, they could handle that flow, the additional flow that they were asking to handle. I mean, that's out there, but nothing about who owned it.
Does the Bath Sewer have an easement on any of those roads out there?
I don't, no, not that I'm aware of. No, not that I'm aware of.
Well, from my perspective and the way that I've seen it forever and today is the Wing Farm property has, is now in a position where it is generating a good deal of income from the town of West Bath. And with income comes risk. So if whatever we end up spending, if we end up spending money on that sewer, we're going to get it back eventually because something's happening there.
I agree.
Whereas before, nothing was happening there and the land was considered worthless.
But there's also a fee, right? Derek pays every month to the city Bath, so like that's part of that infrastructure fee.
But we're not getting any of that.
Well, it's, it's.
My point is maybe a ref歇 or something that we just put.
We should get a fee.
You shouldn't get a fee though.
Right, but we shouldn't have to fix the sewer once it goes bad.
Right.
Well.
Right.
Well, they're.
That's the definition. You can't have it both ways. Is that darling?
I think we can.
Yeah, so your, your issues with problems with the sewer is not going to come from grease and that sort of thing. Any, anything with a kitchen, commercial kitchen should have a grease trap before it goes to the sewer. Your issue in sewer is going to be scouring from gravel, things like that, getting into it from dirt in the road, piles of rocks near the road, things like that.
Broken pipe is a problem.
Is when, you know, developments are done and they're not covering them so that all of the sand goes into them and that's what scours the pipes and ruins the connections between the pipes and inside the structures. So sand is your problem, rocks are your problem, not grease.
But interestingly, I would, I would love to see if, and maybe it's a no, but I would love to approach and get a definitive answer one way or the other.
I think you need to go back and have somebody, I think the original federal guidelines as to how they had, so many requirements on how it had to be set up. And the setup, I believe that West Bath is responsible.
And if it's a year.
The town of West Bath is responsible. So rather than keep going back and forth, you've got to have somebody who knows what they're doing to look at the original federal guidelines and follow those guidelines back and forth. If we don't know, none of us know.
So will the documents at the town hall, I guess.
No, but you need somebody to really go and, who knows what they're looking at, legally.
My frustration, David, is here we go again. This was done and we've lost it somewhere. How do we?
We have not lost it.
We have.
We have.
The federal plans are still around. They're still, we have some.
Why don't we know this and why don't we have?
Because this was done in a very fast process originally.
Well, this is with everything in this town. We talk about some person allowed to do this, but can't do that. But another person, we're just trying to slow it down.
So we don't ever get into the problem again.
We know, we keep doing this. We have to make up for building permits here and who are saying, well, this one, this one, but not this one.
At this point, we've got to solve it.
I think it should be solved because we're going to.
So know where to solve it. It's if somebody who knows what they're doing, look at these plans from the federal government.
But once we figure it out, where do we put it, what will we do with it so we don't?
Once we, once we figure it out, the person, whoever, the firm figures it out, black and white, then we will know the town and so will Petrick, that means who owns it, who's responsible.
We've already come a long way with record keeping.
Yeah, the record keeping was not great for the longest time and they've come a long way with it. Every lot in town that's ever had a permit, that they could find the documents for, has its own file now. So it's not under Kathy, it's under, you know, R1 Lot 16. So anything that happens in that should go in that folder, those boxes for these subdivisions and these developments.
But then this week, it's, I'm sorry, even this week I'm hearing, we've been, there's a road in town that we've been maintaining and, you know, all these things. She is doing a great job, but I'm just saying, I don't know how we got this bad, how we make sure we don't lose this stuff.
That's why I'm concerned about you saying, okay, we're going to have everything done by September.
Right.
That's not going to happen.
But I look at, but now I'll go back to the documents. God help us, we have a fire in town hall. That is not backed up anywhere. There's nothing, we've done nothing to.
The federal government has lists of these things everywhere. We don't have to.
I think she's speaking of like building permits and. Everything, all of our stuff that we have in the town, all of those building permits that she's just talking about that we've organized.
We have the software. We have software now that we can scan the building permits.
So we should.
We will. We're, it's a process. We're going to get to it.
And I just want to remind you that it wasn't too long ago that all the books were kept in Alice Small's basement. So we've come a long way and things have improved a good deal. But the original federal standards for those, the development farms were all over the place and the federal government has a record on it, I'm pretty sure.
From what I've seen, there's nothing in the federal packet that mentions anything about sewer or water lines. Certainly not who's responsible for them and it notes that they're there. I think my money would be to check on, I've read a bunch of this stuff because I couldn't sleep apparently. Planning board minutes, planning board minutes from in oh nine when they were trying to come up with this plan. West Bath was set in before Bath on some of this stuff. They had to come to terms and the same for Bath to West Bath. So, I mean, if you look at, how do you look at archive minutes like that? Because the town, this town only goes back to two thousand nineteen.
Yeah, the rest are downstairs in files.
Yep.
They had a headland and a bank of my glass.
Can I have access to those?
Oh, absolutely.
Christine, like if you do go talk to the city, right, so like.
What year are you looking for?
Basically around, probably the year before the park was developed. You know, because they started talking about it, it took a year to kind of figure out, so.
Two oh six, seven, eight, nine, two oh seven.
Their earliest was two thousand six and seven.
Okay. I can, I can start working through and let you know when I.
So if Derek, say ends up with a brewery out there, right, there'd be massive water and sewer bills, right? And so like if you go to City Bath, not all the money they collect goes to the Sutrie plant, like it goes for infrastructure too. So like, we have to maintain the lines, like some of that money should get kicked back to the town. Because if someday like that sewer line would get replaced, it'd be another eight hundred grain, right, you know?
Well, the water, water and sewer.
It's like the water district would do the work.
And that's kind of where I'm trying to take this, is that there's money being captured and, and I'm looking for a piece of the allocated back to the town to cover future issues.
Well, this may be a job for Sally because I think what may have happened is nobody envisioned anything happening out there, so nobody can.
Right.
And now that we see that there is going to be, maybe it is the time to do some negotiations because they are going to be making money and there are going to be a lot, things have changed significantly.
Can I ask, as part of your information with the town of Bath, the dialogue outside of the Wing Farm development and how much more is that you, there's outside of the Wing Farm development. Are they going to be allowed to even hitch up to the Bath Sewer Department if it was outside of the original Wing Farm development?
Or is it even the capacity for it, knowing what's going in there?
I don't know if there's capacity for it. It's going to have to be assessed.
Because that zoning is critical to having sewage and water. So as, as part of your dialogue, can you, would you adjust that also?
There are stops around, actually, the city water behind here, just as far as Reno's construction, that's where it ends. So in the future, it would be nice to, because West Bath has this wonderful drinking water, to work with them and get more, more relevant.
The water is not the problem in Wing Farm. The water they'll cover. The water department will handle it. If it broken half tomorrow, they fix it, no cost to the, to this town. I understand that.
That is too. If we ever wanted to develop, perfect. You can't develop Bath without sewer.
That can't be developed anyway, right? I don't think you can put a building on that.
Back to front.
They couldn't tell you though.
Well, once you lose the records, you can do anything.
But wasn't it beautiful cowards? We're driving those. Long were negotiating with Bath. There's that boundary issue. Speaking.
Which is also about an eighteen month hang on.
West Bath Bath Summit, like a weekend summit.
Oh, yeah.
When a minute of rain, you don't let them out, they come to a three.
You say they, that's you too. You're part of the day.
As long as we can fix it, I have no problem going in the room.
There are lots of people I want to be in rooms, frankly.
And they probably don't want to be with us either, so maybe.
No, I don't know, yeah. That, that exhausts pretty much my list.
It's a lot.
I think we plan on having a few of these hang on.
Yeah, because we have a reval coming and, you know, there's a fair amount of.
You think people might be interested in that too?
They might be interested in that, you know, we've got a lot of data entry to do with that and we're going to have a whole brand new system with brand new forms and brand new processes. So there's a lot going on. And our focus in the office, unless you want to send us off in a different direction, is really to make sure that daily operations are functioning the way they should be.
Oh gosh.
Before we move on to bigger, more exciting endeavors.
Have you been, received your training in Vision?
No.
That was already put on there for a year ago.
No, I have it on my computer. I don't see any point in paying for training and we're not going to convert the data from Vision.
Yeah, but if we have an eighteen month timeframe for our, we cross over to TRIL.
The reval is happening in July. It's not worth the time and effort.
This was a request eighteen months ago.
It was a request. We put it on my computer. I looked into it. I am not interested in having the town pay for training for something that Carly and Julie can just handle for the time being.
Okay, today, but eighteen months ago, that probably wasn't the case.
I still felt it was the case.
But we asked you to do it.
That's a personnel matter, not the public discussion.
Right, and, you know, I hear what you're saying. I agree with what you're saying. I made a decision not to pursue that. I thought that other endeavors were more important at the time. And we have staff in the town office who are proficient on it that can just handle what needs to be handled.
Okay, are we done with goal setting? Well, we have, we have the broadband that was listed last year and we should note that the committee has been set up and is working.
And should have the survey status within two weeks. Following up with the request that I made to Comcast.
And I'm looking just to check again. Oh, the what, the, the thing? The fee that, we didn't look at the fee structure about moorings.
It was for six dollars. I was looking at that in the back of this.
Right, so that.
That was the fee from online mooring. If we chose the online mooring, you're at six dollars per permit.
And you're looking at the other.
Right.
For TRIL.
So when we know how that's going to work, I think that's a good time to talk about fees. It should also be part of the ordinance discussion.
Okay. And the goals are fluid. I mean, we want to put another one on there, take one off or hopefully achieve a couple and take them off and then put more on there.
Are we all set with goal setting? Town administrators report.
Okay, a couple of things tonight. Carly requested that you appoint ballot clerks. We have ballot clerks and we have election clerks, which can be confusing. Ballot clerks are for town elections. Election clerks are for state elections.
So we're doing this colored, not, it's not a ballot ballot or?
These are the clerks that check people in.
They're called ballot clerks. They don't necessarily pertain to just ballots.
But we're not doing more.
Municipal elections and town meetings.
But so the, but the election is the cards, the cards, right? It's not a paper ballot?
The town meeting that we will be having March third will be an open town meeting where they have cards.
Okay.
So these are the same individuals that serve as election clerks. It's just to confirm them for ballot clerk.
I thought we reviewed this with last time, didn't we?
With those.
We have reviewed them as election clerks. Now we have to appoint the same people as ballot clerks for municipal elections. I move that we accept all the people that were election clerks and allow them to be ballot clerks. You want to read their names?
Yes, please.
Okay. Democrats, Enes Elliot, Wayne Elliot, Joyce Hennessy, Madeline Hennessy, Sarah Hennessy, Lyndon Lemire, Lamar, Cynthia Morris, Robert Morris, Kathleen Perry, Suzanne Steer, Margaret Totten, Richard Totten. Unenrolled, James Atherton, I apologize for your name, I'm sorry, James. Catherine Powers, Jane Weir and John Wolfe. Republicans, Deborah Bruce, Diane Delano, Kathleen Duzik. Peter Onar, Kathleen McGee, Jay Pappas and Ashley Randall.
Have these people come to check with them or are you just because of concern that one of those names is one that pulled out earlier last?
Right, that was for another committee.
But she still wants to be on, so.
I move that we accept these individuals to be our ballot clerks.
Second. All in favor? Those guys are showing up.
Sweet enough to say.
You can always call the others.
I didn't vote for me.
I missed the wooden box.
Yeah.
Probably can't be a ballot.
That was awesome. That should actually go in the historical society.
For a few years, yes.
Okay, part of what we're considering, what we will be considering in next year's budget is to install heat pumps at the town office. In order to do that, we need to do some work in our utility room with regard to the electrical panel. So we have a quote from Frackie Electric to install a sub-panel, do some work to the current panel and add some additional receptacles so that we're not running extension cords where we shouldn't be.
Now, if this is under, the installation of heat pumps falls under the CARES Act, I believe, or not?
I think it will be approved. I need to check on it to make sure that we can include that in addition to the.
I mean, I would say it's the product and installation.
So my question to you is, do you want to take care of it within this year's current budget, which we can do out of our capital account?
I'd rather save this.
Or do you want to wait until next year's budget?
I'd rather take it out of the CARES Act, it's applicable. We have to spend that money in a very specific guideline. We shouldn't touch the money that we have in the coffer. We can use this to cover that, is my position.
How do you agree? If we can do it out of CARES Act, we need, then that would be a good pocket. If we can't, let's, let's use this year's budget.
But I, this was one of the things that was covered, I believe, you said at the last meeting.
Well, I think it might be, but I'm not sure and I don't want to, you know, bind the town or be.
So what's the process to find out?
Well, I just need to call somebody to see if it works or not.
So why don't, we'll postpone that until the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
This is just an estimate, right? Do we still enroll for bids?
That's up to. Um, that's up to you. I mean, we've asked three people and one person responded, so that would satisfy the requirement. But again, that would be up to the board as well.
Eric?
Um, I think as part of these heat pumps, you need to consider the energy draw on these things. If you intend on ever putting a generator in, it significantly doubles your generator. These don't run easy.
Yeah, and he did mention that as well.
It's very expensive once you exceed a normal household generator.
But along the same lines, you could essentially not hook us up to the generator.
But then you lose your heat source, correct?
No, because the furnace is still there.
It's in addition to the furnace.
It's, well.
Supplemental.
Supplemental, heat, yeah, well, AC.
It's AC as well. They don't have, it takes care of what the units.
The furnace is supposed to be there. The furnace is supposed to be there.
I'd just like to see, and actually I'd like to, and we'll talk about future again, I'd like to, for maybe us to take another look at what we can apply those CARES Act funds to. By the next meeting, hopefully we'll have the information back from Comcast as to whether they're going to do the build out as part of their committed contract. Hopefully that's the answer, but we'll find out.
Okay, any clean notes?
Nope, that's it.
Future gender items?
Well, I want to make sure that this is on there, the CARES Act and this.
Eddie, how about comment?
Sorry. Um, I just want to give support to the proposed, what I proposed last time for noise, just so we have a. I, when Forniers were cutting steel today, I was standing in, under, in front of my house. Normal ambient noise was fifty-four to fifty-five dB. When they were cutting steel, it was seventy-four to peak. It significantly increases the noise level. I realize they're an existing business, nothing we can do. But in support of what I proposed, acts like that of commercial businesses and their day-to-day activity significantly raises the noise in the residential areas. Just for information. And the other part was the banging and dropping of the casellas and next door.
So noted.
Thank you.
I have one, I can circle back around. So the thought is we're going to have the town's attorney look at these plans and decide if they're, what we were sold is actually what we were sold. If, let's say that goes, she agrees with the plans, what, how does that? How does that, what changes, what happens?
I suggest that we wait and see how the March third meeting goes.
Either she's going to say it works or it doesn't, so if it, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand is how do I get notified of the, you know, what's the process and how do I get notified of the outcome?
So if we approve the, the, i- i- if it gets voted in on the third. That's on the.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
I think that would be between you and Christine.
Okay, okay. So Christine will ask the town attorney to, to look at this language and these plans and decide.
Yes.
If, if she doesn't agree, then there's obviously a big problem. If she does agree, how does that affect the, does it affect the planning board? Does, does an ordinance have to be done at that point? Or do we reference the plans and the ordinance?
I would imagine that the goal would be to create documentation.
Right.
I, that would be my goal. If the board has a different goal, that's fine.
Is that done through the select board? Would that be done through the select board or the planning board?
Well, I think we'd get a clarification from the attorney and then make an official document.
Again, I think if you work with Christine, it is, she can help you with any policy procedures that you need to follow.
Okay.
I, I think we finalize everything in one direction. We can get to our procedures and policies. So again, finaling through the town administrator makes a lot of sense. And then if she needs to bring it to the select board, toss it to the planning board, toss it back to the attorney, it can be done.
I think it totally depends on what legal determines based on your documents what happens. I mean, I don't know, can't answer it. And while she's looking at it, she can look at what she thinks about the sewer there too.
I'm sorry, I got to look at your name of, I.
Barry Jackson.
Barry, sorry.
Thank you. From a legal standpoint, I would see that the town is asking for a legal opinion whether this overrides the ordinance.
Correct.
And, and once she represents legal opinion, if it's, yes, it does, that's it. He gets a copy of that letter, that's it. He's able to act even though it's a theoretical violation of the ordinance.
Right, because the best way to get a copy of that letter is to go through the town administrator, who the decision is going to go to. I think what happens is he can ask me and I'm, I'm not going to be able to produce the letter. So again, going through the town administrator to get documentation that.
I'm looking to have this, I think the town attorney really needs to have this, how it was marketed.
Thank you. I have a very crummy copy of it.
Do you have the electronic link you just sent?
I do.
And do you have those plans electronically?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Because if we, that may, may get expedited down to the attorney if it's electronically done.
Uh, do you have a business card or an email or, I mean, if you get, I have her email, never mind. I have her email. Christine.
That can help expedite delivery also.
How far do I have?
Are we going into executive session?
Yes.
Do you want to?
I'll just move to you. Yes, I'm going that we enter into executive session pursuant to section one, chapter one, MRSA, section four oh five six A to discuss the town, the contract.
I told you. Second, fine, all in favor.